Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, March 26, 2024. It's 9:00 a.m., and we're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. We are pleased to have with us once again the chaplain of the Hood County Commissioners Court, because he's always here, the honorable pastor, Mr. Mike McMahon, to give us the invocation.
I'm having a hard time dealing with that. I'll be with you in a minute. Father, thank you for the way you love us, for the way you take care of us, for the way you have provided for us. And thank you for the commissioners this morning as they enter the work that you have provided for them to do. Help them to remember that they serve you and that they honor you. And I thank you, Father, for the ideas that your Holy Spirit will give them, for the direction that they will take, because everything that they do is for the good of Hood County. We thank you for that, Father. We praise you and we love you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the pledge for the great state of Texas. Honor, protect, and allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Y'all want to be signing these? There's two of them. Okay. The first item on the agenda, or the next item on the agenda, is that the special presentation, it's a proclamation declaring April the 14th through April the 20th, 2024, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And we have a proclamation up here, so Sheriff, do you have Mr. Sean up here and your very good dispatch? This is for y'all to use to sign out. That's for that. It's such an important document, we want to make sure that we all sign it for y'all. Okay? Y'all do such a good job. I tell you what, this is the lifeblood of our community right here, the dispatch. And this is where everything happens, so we would have anything. So let's give a big hand to the sheriff, to Sean McGregor, and the dispatch here for all the good work that they do. Is that all of them?
Good.
If you've got your glasses, you want to read it, or Tom's going to read it.
He's just about to read it.
All of you, but you're not reading it.
See this, and then y'all get to keep you. Tech getting old.
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe.
Okay. Official proclamation to designate April 14th through the 20th, 2024, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when emergency occurs, the prompt response of the police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of the information obtained from the citizens who telephone the Hood County Emergency Communications Center, and whereas public safety telecommunications communicators are the first and most critical contact of our citizens have emergency, when our citizens have emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunications of Hood County Emergency Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Commissioners Court of Hood County declares the week of April 14th through the 20th, 2024, to be National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Hood County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. All the commissioners signed it, and the county clerk. And I am very proud of these guys and how hard they work. So they are the lifeblood of everything that goes on. 911 calls come in, non-emergency calls from all over the county, and they got to make the right decisions just right away, get the appropriate agency dispatch, whether it's fire, ambulance, or law enforcement, and they do a fantastic job. So deputies, they can listen to what's going on, what they're dispatched to, plan for it when they're going. Firemen know that they're dispatched to a fire. EMTs, paramedics know that they're going to save a life somewhere, so they can think about it when they're getting, heading in that direction. While these guys, they don't get time to think about it. They just answer that phone and get started, go from zero to 100, and nothing flat. So they're what hold everything together. So I sure am proud of them.
Okay, the next proclamation, I mean, y'all been all over the papers. Y'all be in Sports Illustrated next up here. I'm very proud of these guys right here. This is a present a proclamation to honor Lapan Indians, UIL 2A State Boys Basketball Championships. Commissioner Andrews?
Guys, come on up here.
That's a pretty impressive medal that y'all all got. Do they want those back, or do y'all, can y'all keep them?
Put them with you. Put them with the one from last year.
I kind of joked around this morning that they're getting to know the way down here pretty well. This has been doing this quite frequently, and this is actually the second year in a row that Lapan Boys have won the state championship in basketball. So we've got, yeah. We've got a proclamation here I'd like to read. It's a proclamation honoring the Lapan Indians, UIL 2A State Boys Basketball Championship. Whereas the hard work, determination, exceptional team chemistry, and talent of the 2024 Lapan Indians basketball team enabled these student athletes to another state championship title. And whereas on Saturday, March 9th, 2024, the Lapan Indians successfully defended their 2023 title and won the 2024 state title by defeating the Shelbyville Dragons 47 to 36 in San Antonio, Texas. And whereas the Lapan Indians have won six state championships and 15 state tournament appearances, including six of the last eight. And whereas winning the 2024 UIL 2A State Boys Basketball Championship brought honor to Lapan High School, the city of Lapan, and Hood County on the local, state, and national level. Now therefore, I, Kevin Andrews, Commissioner for Precinct 1, along with all the members of the Commissioners Court of Hood County, Texas, do hereby recognize and heartily congratulate Lapan High School and the Lapan Indians basketball team on its outstanding accomplishment. And further, I urge all citizens of Hood County to join me in recognizing all members of the team, their coaches, and parents in celebrating the team's achievement and wish the members continued success. Adopted this 26th day of March, 2024.
And we have Ms. Jeannie Stacks, five years. Jeannie Stacks, are you, yeah, there you are.
Yes. Would the court like to come down and present Jeannie her certificate?
Okay. I want you to know that. She does a very good job, a very important job. Five years, another 15 to go, so.
Are you sure?
Congratulations. That's a diamond ring in there. 10 years for Sonia Huckabee, right? I see her all the time down there. She's one of our, there's, these two people are very important to all the county employees anyway. Paychecks, right?
For sure.
Paychecks, okay.
Do I shake your hand? Yay!
Congratulations.
I'm just going to say real quick for Sonia, Hood County is blessed to have Sonia. I am blessed to have Sonia, and it is amazing to watch her brain work. I honestly believe she is one of the smartest people that I know, and I am so lucky and thankful to have her. Thank you.
Boy, this next one is really, really important here. I can't believe this. I don't know if you're going to be able to walk up here. This is for Penny Weisen, who's been here only a mere 25 years, running and helping the district judge here, being the court coordinator. This is really an important person here, and we all really like this lady here, don't we, Judge Buford?
Yes. Apparently, her name is Priscilla, but we all call her Penny. I remember the day I hired Penny, 25 years ago.
Yeah.
Just think about 25 years of working for our county. Think about all the big cases that have come through district court, and she has set them, she has made sure that they're on the right schedule, she has worked with attorneys, she's done so many things. For me personally, I'll tell you that whenever I came into the office of District Judge, it was a bit chaotic. It came very quickly, and I was so grateful to have her. And the team that works for that court helped me in so many ways. She's a confidante, she has got a lot of wisdom, and most importantly, she cares a lot about this county, and we care a lot about her. So congratulations and thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Citizens Comments at Large, or the open mic. You must fill out a public participation form in order to speak. Sheriff Dees has these forms. You fill them out. It's one form per topic. And so you can be called in the order in which they are given, and give them to the county clerk, who will number them and hand them to me. And so the only one we have for open mic today is Dr. Harold Granick. And you passed. Well, okay, you're just always trying to get some insurance out here. I understand that, Dr. Granick. Okay. So no more comments at large then? We will then go into the miscellaneous business, Roman numeral seven. The item number one is discuss and take appropriate action to sign the City of Granbury's event application on request from Granbury Wine Walk related to vendor parking around the historic courthouse during the wine walk on Friday, April 26th, and Saturday, April 27th, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Sunday, April 28th, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., set up to begin at 8:00 a.m. on Friday. I have the application here with me. And is there anybody from the city here want to speak about this? Do y'all want to speak on this or not? It's pretty straightforward. We've been doing this for 100 years, and it's always worked out well. I think it's a good deal, and y'all just want us to sign it. I think everything's in here, the insurance, everything like we almost always do. So I dare hear a motion.
Judge, I'll make the motion to sign the City of Granbury's event application on request from the Granbury Wine Walk related to vendor parking around the historic courthouse during the wine walk on Friday, April 26th, and Saturday, April 27th, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Sunday, April 28th, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., set up to begin at 8:00 a.m. on Friday.
Second. Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to approve the City of Granbury's event application on the dates and times as stated, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion is granted unanimously. Okay. Item number two, discuss and take appropriate action to establish the steering committee members for the master theraphobe planning study. The steering committee will consist of county and municipal shareholders. I thought this was already done.
This is, Clint has been working really hard to contact all the entities, and this is not an action, actionable. So if you're okay with it on two and three, it's just for information, I was just going to let everyone know that Clint has contacted the following entities, City of Granbury, City of Stockton Bend, City of Crescent, the Central Texas Railroad, is that authority? Central Texas Railroad Commission, thank you. City of Toler, City of Lapan, Toler ISD, Granbury ISD, Lapan ISD, and also North Central Texas COG, TechDOT, and of course, TNP will be at the first workshop that Clint has organized on April the 4th, from 1:00 to 4:00 in the EOC. So this really, these two are just for informational purposes only, there's no action to be taken.
Okay, good. And is that the same people for the technical committee?
The technical committee is North Central Texas COG, TechDOT, and TNP.
Okay. Well, good. Thank you. This is just for information purposes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good deal. Now we're down to number four. Discuss and take appropriate action to provide 10 vouchers for the Citizens Collection Station to facilitate community cleanup in the Brazos River Acres and neighborhoods along Membreno Highway and Hayworth Highway. The vouchers may be used through September the 30th of 2024. Got environmental health, and that's yours, Commissioner Samuelson. Do you want to make the motion?
Yes. Did you want to say anything, Jeannie? Okay.
We just, if we're going to approve them, we'd need the court to act on them.
I think that's a good idea.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to provide 10 vouchers for the Citizens Collection Station to facilitate community cleanup in Brazos River Acres and neighborhoods along Membreno Highway, Hayworth Highway. The vouchers may be used through September 30th, 2024.
Second. Okay. Motion has been made by Commissioner Samuelson to approve the 10 vouchers for the Citizens Collection Station for Brazos River Acres and neighborhoods along Membreno Highway and Hayworth Highway, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Stacks. Okay. Next item, provide update on Wolf Hollow Power Plant 2 abatement agreement. Commissioner Samuelson.
Thank you. So many people may have noticed that there was a public hearing to discuss the, amending the abatement, and that that was canceled, so I just wanted to explain why that was canceled. I wanted to take time to explain why the public hearing was canceled for the Wolf Hollow 2 power plant abatement agreement. So when I began to look deeper into writing what was meant to be a carve-out of the property that the cryptocurrency data center is on, which is what was discussed in Commissioners' Court on, in November, November 9th, 2021, when the Compute North first came to court to ask for their development plan to be approved, there was a lot of discussion about carving out the land. But at, as I looked deeper into it and looked into the abatement agreement itself, the eligible property already excluded land, not just the land that the cryptocurrency plan is on, but all the land that is owned by Wolf Hollow 2 Power Plant. So I requested confirmation from the appraisal district on March 15th and received confirmation on March 18th, which has resulted in the public hearing being canceled. As I walked through the process with the appraisal district and the county attorney's office prior to putting the notice on, it wasn't until the 15th that it was discovered that this language excluded land, the fact that apparently was unknown to the court in November of 2021, because there was 45-minute discussion on whether or not to exclude this land. So I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of why it was canceled. And one of the things that I've learned in going through this, I spent many hours on the phone with our new chief appraiser, Jeff Law, about at the beginning on how would we do this, can we do it, what would it look like, and then reaffirmed with him that the land was already excluded. He said it's actually not unusual that abatement agreements don't include land, because makes sense to me now that the land is already there. So what you're abating when you, when a company comes in to build something, or you're really abating the improvements, not the land itself. So that made total sense. I just wish we would have had that discussion in February when I first discussed it with him. So anyway, in the abatement agreement, it defines eligible property as value of building structures, fixed machinery and equipment, and site improvements necessary to the operation and administration of the plant, not inventory, supplies, land, or housing. So I just wanted to explain that, why it was canceled, and I don't have anything else.
And while we're on that, I mean, Jeff Law, I saw it too. They, the lawyer for Constellation, and Constellation met in my office. It was too late to cancel the meeting, and they were all on their way from Austin, but I looked at it and what the mining facility that mines for Bitcoin, I asked him to give me the, the actual taxes that were paid by GD Data Center, because they owned the facility for most of the year. And for Hood County General Fund, they paid $243,961. For the Hood County Library Fund, $6,735. For the Hood County Lateral Road, it's Mr. Don Lenny's deal up here, they paid $31,881. And for Granbury ISD, they paid $934,056, for a total of $1,216,635. That's what GD Data Center did, who owned the facility for most of 2023. Then Marathon Holding Company had a lot of the Bitcoin mining machines that are in the containers, and they paid taxes on that personal property, and they paid to Hood County General Fund, $125,402. The Hood County Library, $3,462. The Hood County Lateral Road, $16,387. And the Granbury ISD District, $408,127,000, for a total of $635,380. So all in all, the GC Data and Marathon Holdings paid in 2023 $1,842,000 in taxes. So pretty substantial, but anyway.
428 of that was county, and 428,000 when you add them all together.
I've just given you the total figure.
Yeah, I had it already.
The total figures that they paid in taxes is $1,842,000.
Right. Some of that went to the school district. Three-fourths.
This is pretty important in Hood County.
Yeah, I know. I'm just clarifying what went to the county and what went to the school district.
All right. Item number six, discuss and take appropriate action, authorize a county judge and tax assessor to sign a property tax assessment and collection contract effective March 1st, 2024 to March 1st, 2028. And we have with us Ms. Andrea Ferguson here. Yes, ma'am?
Good morning. Just signing of the contract.
It's just the standard deal, isn't it?
Well, there's a, there's a few updates. One of the.
I changed the date for the signing.
Well, the, the contract is, now is presented as for four years versus the normal one year, which has been.
Yes, I did.
Process, which, that makes the, the sentence on that term. So it reads, "The contract shall be effective from March 1st, 2024 through March 1st, 2028, unless terminated by one of the parties pursuant to the termination provisions of the contract." But then the next statement is conflicting with that. It says, "This contract may be renewed each year with affirmative action by the parties."
If we change anything in the contract.
So then also on section, "Services to be performed," that 4A, that first sentence does not comply with SB 2019. The, that was the legislation that changed the wording from effective tax rate to non, no, no new revenue tax rate, and also the rollback rate was changed to voter-approved tax rate. And there's a couple of just small typos that I've. And there's a couple of just small typos that I've discussed with Mr. Law, and those aren't material. But the, I think that we need to update the wording to be in compliance with SB 2019, since that is the current. I mean, there is no effective tax rate wording anymore in the tax code or rollback rate.
Well, it's your agreement. Do you have, what Commissioner Samuelson was saying, do you, have you made these additions in here? Or do you have one?
I can make the change on that. That's not a problem.
Okay.
I mean, it's not there, not there right now. She doesn't have a document with the corrections.
But I can change that, like we did the last.
But with those, with those three additions, changing the wording on that, and we do have, that will run from March 1st, 2024 through March 1st, 2028. So you don't have to keep coming back on the deal. So with those terms, and you will make those terms. And then, I guess the contract, everybody else is.
They've already signed it all.
Everybody else has signed it. I'm talking about Eddie Rodriguez, Secretary of the Board, Jeff Law. Everybody's signed it except you and me.
Yeah, I really think.
And it's on the second page. So will you go ahead and make those changes, then?
I'll make it and just add the bottom page to it.
And I think we need to talk about the contract process so that we don't end up here, like making changes during court. Is that, we don't, we, the court, don't have a chance to redline until it's attached to our backup material to review it or redline. That's the first time the court sees it, not just this contract. I'm just talking about contracts in general.
But this contract's between me, the judge, and them.
Yeah.
That's it.
So we just, we're, we're authorizing the judge to sign it, or any contract. I'm not, I'm not just pointing this one out, but it happened last court, too, that we, you know, we need an opportunity to review it before it's in court, before the other party has signed it, in case there's anything that needs to be changed, so we don't end up having to redline during court and then ask the other party to okay it. So we just need to talk about that.
By law, it just says you and me, doesn't it?
Yes, just you and me.
That's what I understood it to be. Is that your understanding, Mr. Mills?
Somebody asked me that ahead of time. I take her word for it. I mean, I, I'm reading the contract, but I didn't review that part you talked about.
Okay. All right. Well, do I hear a motion? Make your motion, please, so we can move on.
I'm not sure I agree with the extension of the term. I would rather it come back to court every year for us to review.
There's no reason for it to come back to court every year. Nothing really changes in it.
Well, we should have changed the effective tax rate to no new revenue tax rate a few years ago.
It would increase her ability, they want her to collect the taxes every year, whatever they are.
Because I don't want to take it back.
Yeah. Well, do we?
Make motion that we approve the action to authorize county judge and tax assessor to sign the property tax assessment and collection contract effective March 1, 2024 to March 1, 2028, with the three changes that have been identified.
I hear second. I second it. Okay. All those in favor? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
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 How did you vote?
Uh, yea. Yea.
Yea. Okay. Motion carries three to two. Thank you very much.
I'll send it over to you today.
All right.
Do you want me to, Andrea, do you want me to send you the typos that we, Mr. Law and I agreed on? Thank you. And the.
Thank you very much. Okay.
And the correction to 4A.
I'll get it to you. I'm going to send it, the bottom page over with it, too.
Okay. Item number seven. Discuss and take appropriate action to adopt the Texas Association of Counties Tax 2023 Recommended Statement on Closed Meetings. This statement will replace the current statement at the bottom of each Commissioner Court's meeting. Commissioner Andrews.
Oh, actually, Samuelson. Drew, Owen, would you mind putting that? Thank you. This was updated every year. Tac goes, the Texas Association of Counties updates their documentation, and this is in a, in a publication that they call Tac, Public Open Meetings Act. And they have updated the wording that they recommend to put on the bottom of the Commissioner's Court Agenda, which, which states pursuant to the authority granted under Government Code, Chapter 5501, the Commissioner's Court may convene a closed session to discuss any of the above agenda items immediately before any closed session. The specific section or sections of Government Code, Chapter 5501, that provide statutory authority will be announced. And that's all this is, is just to update the, our Commissioner's Court Agenda to come, be in, really, it's not compliance, because this is a suggestion, not a requirement. But they're the, the, the authority of the commission that gives us guidance on a lot of things that we do in Commissioner's Court.
Further discussion or comment?
Yeah, I agree with this. This is an open-ended language, and then the only requirement after that is if we have to convene into an executive session that we identify which section of the code that we're going in there for. So it's, it's really just kind of simplifies it, in my opinion. So I certainly agree with this.
Any other comment? Do I hear a motion?
All right. I make the motion to adopt the Texas Association of Counties 2023 Recommended Statement on Closed Meetings. This statement will replace the current statement at the bottom of each Commissioner's Court Agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to adopt the Texas Association of Counties 2023 Recommended Statement on Closed Meetings. This statement will replace the current statement at the bottom of each Commissioner's Court meeting, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. All right. Item number eight. Discuss and take appropriate action allow the county judge to sign the agreement with SAP for Crystal Server with total investment not to exceed $41,000 for the first partial term and first full term ending December 31st, 2025. Funds to be paid from IT software hardware budget. Maintenance beyond the required two-year term will be canceled upon purchase. This is what's been brought up now 16 times?
No, it was.
Or 32 times? I didn't.
No, it was just last court.
Only on number three. So we're not that, we're not that high yet. But fortunately now, and you know, before, before I do start, I would like to take this time to apologize to everybody here, both, you know, I've already, you know, apologized to Commissioner Samuelson. Haven't gotten a chance to do it in person yet, and this doesn't count either.
Okay.
So I'll get that to you later. But to the court as well and to the general public, I would like to apologize for my behavior during the last court. Unfortunately, let things kind of get the best of me, and really, there's no excuse for it. But, you know, the best I can do is own up for it, admit that I was wrong, and that's really about it. So I really just kind of want to start there. But, you know, after that, you know, I reached out to Commissioner Samuelson. We kind of sat down, reached out to SAP a couple of times, and kind of got everything all straightened out, understood, you know, everything. Because the verbiage, you know, it's, it's straightforward, but it's a little too straightforward. It's kind of weird. It's very hard to read. But we've got everything confirmed, and, you know, we're basically going to be going with Crystal. It's got a mandatory support period for two years. After that two-year period, we can cancel. I sincerely doubt we'll need it, as the server itself is already up and running. It's just waiting for a license at this point. It's a fairly basic software, so I really don't see us needing support. And if we do, we can always reach back, get it at a year-to-year term, which will be cheaper as well, because we don't need the enterprise-level support. We would just need the basic-level support. And that's what's stipulated in this contract, is the enterprise-level support, so.
Appreciate, as we work through the details with SAP, this will ensure that we are protected against any unknown maintenance increases that we haven't planned for by sending the letter, which was a great suggestion by SAP. Just go ahead and send your cancellation letter right away, so that.
Yeah, so that, you know, we don't have to.
We don't forget about it a year and a half from now.
Exactly.
So thank you, Owen, for your words, and also thank you for working with me through this.
Of course, and my apologies again.
Do y'all have the contract?
So this one will be done through DocuSign, so you won't have a physical one here to sign. There'll be one for you to do when you get back to the office.
Perfect, perfect. That's great.
I had the same question.
I thought it all this time up here now, I don't have one, but okay.
No, I have the same question. There's no signature line. So with that, I'll make the motion to, oh, sorry. Go ahead. She said we have a speaker.
Yes, Mr. David Ferris. Thank you.
Hello, David Ferris. I think all of you have seen me up here before. I just wanted to talk a little bit in general about software contracts, things of this nature. I had planned to make the last meeting. I had looked at the contract, and it's like, what in the world are they doing with the rates on the increases of the maintenance? So that was one of my big issues. I know, know you caught it. But there was another issue that I took from that, and I didn't go back and watch the whole thing. It was too tedious. But the, there was a term that was used that was, well, this is just bullet plate contract. With big software, there's no such thing as bullet, bullet plate. Everything is going to be different. If you go out and buy 50 copies of Microsoft Excel, yes, that's a commodity. You can't change it. You buy it, you agree to the license. But with any kind of custom software, Tyler, with SAP, Crystal Reports, you should be scrutinizing that contract, because you got to protect us, the taxpayers, and you, the county. All right? One of the things about this, as you know, I spent 40 years developing software, converting software, implementing, teaching, management of software in judges' offices. We once talked and he, about Tyler, and he said, well, maybe on the next contract, he should, give me a call. I'm happy. I didn't get a call. But I also wanted to mention for the court here, there are at least four people I know of that have significant, large software experience in various areas. I had said, you know, I'm not a big contract guy, but I can look at one and see, that's not going to work. But I'm not competent, should I say, to author a major one. But there are people that have significant. Nanette, you're one. Another one is a guy I've talked to a lot, Richard Hoffs. And another one, she's not here, so I won't mention the name, but if you want to ask privately, fine. At least I, and I'll speak for him, maybe Richard, I think we would be happy to consult. Obviously, you know it, okay? From your review of Tyler software. So don't assume that the contract is bullet and that you can't change it, because anything in that software, you can negotiate. You may not get it, but you should at least try, okay? And this one, I'm fine with it. I was going to address, what is the contract? And what does SAP say about re-adding maintenance if you decide it's necessary? But that was covered, so those were my points on this one. Thank you.
Okay. No, we'll mic your motion.
Okay. Make the motion to allow the county judge to sign the agreement with SAP for Crystal Server with the total investment not to exceed $41,000 for the first partial term and first full-year term of maintenance ending December 31st, 2025. Funds to be paid from IT software hardware budget. Maintenance beyond the required two-year term will be canceled upon purchase.
Second that.
Yeah, motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to allow the county judge to sign the agreement with SAP for Crystal Server with the total investment not to exceed $41,000 for the first partial term and first full term ending December 31st, 2025. Funds to be paid from IT software hardware budget. Maintenance beyond the required two-year term will be canceled upon purchase, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item, number nine. Receive update from Emergency Management on Status of FB22 and Potential Use of Funds. Ms. Margaret Campbell and Sheriff Deeds. Good morning.
Good morning. Back in November, we requested that the Commissioner's Court allow Emily, the grant writer, to apply for Senate Bill 22 grants. And we are happy to announce that we finally have money in the bank from those two grants. $500,000 goes to the sheriff's office, and $275,000 will go to the district attorney's office. I don't know that the money for district attorney's office is here yet, but we know that it's on its way. We, Emily and I have been working closely with Stephanie, the auditor, as well as the district attorney and the sheriff to make sure that we're complying with all the rules and how they would like to spend the grant money.
Well, the grant money, as I understand it, when we were talking about this when it first came out, can only be used for two purposes by the sheriff's departments, and that's either for personnel or equipment.
That's correct.
Correct?
That's correct. So they outline, you can use it to hire new staff for the sheriff's office. You can allow raises for, I believe it's jailers and deputies that primarily make traffic stops, or you can use it for equipment.
I saw something that, a kind of a projection of what the sheriff wanted to do on that. That is entirely within his purview, and the Commissioner's Court has no authority over that particular grant fund. Am I correct on that?
I believe that the court still needs to make a motion to accept his plan. My understanding from the Attorney General's Office is that, or the comptroller's office, is that there should be a working relationship between the Commissioner's Court and the sheriff. We've given him all the rules. He's made a comprehensive plan that falls well within the scope of the rules. But we would still like for the court to accept his request.
Okay.
We'll have to do that. We didn't put, we didn't word it that way on the agenda.
Yeah.
We can do it next time. Which we're just acknowledging that it complies with SB 22 and that it's set up in the budget correctly, I think, is all we would do.
Yeah, and then to answer any questions that anybody on the court may have as far as how the money will be spent.
I did read it, but it's not in my packet here today. Do you have a copy of what you proposed?
There it is.
Okay. That's good enough for me. I'm a speed reader. This is a true blessing, is it not, Sheriff? Especially for the jailers. Man.
So with this, I guess I've talked to some of you, not all of you, but the first thing that I wanted to do, we've never been able to since, I can't remember even the date, 2017 or 18 was the last time we were full-staffed in the jail. And so I want to be able to help that. So each jailer, $4,000 raise, basically getting the starting pay up to $50,000, and then paying all of them up from that. So 52 jailers on that first page. 52 jailers, $4,000. Be $112,000 for the remainder of the year today. So I guess if we can't approve it today, then it'll be less than that come next week, so more money will be there for me to spend for equipment. But I got with the auditor. We figured out the FICA Medicare retirement, so it's all shown there. And then three patrol deputies. And the reason I only chose to get three patrol deputies is because for the second year, and it's on the last page of this, that there is, with 52 jailers and three patrol deputies, that'll leave us in that 5501. With 52 jailers and three patrol deputies, that'll leave us in that $500,000. It'll take care of everything except for about $6,000. So that's why I couldn't go any higher than that. And now, as far as the equipment, well, so the total is $264,759.45 for 14 pay periods left in the year as of this week. So that'll change if I get to put this on the agenda for next week to get it approved. The equipment, the number one thing, I'll put this into the ARPA request, too. The seminations with pistol and rifle conversions. The number two is 12 helmets to protect the individual while they're using those rifles and pistols for training. Number three is 12 deputy body armor and guardian carriers, and that'll get everybody on the same page with the same style, everybody updated. And we've got that other agenda item, which that doesn't include this. Number four is a breaching tool for the SWAT guys when we need to open a door. The SWAT guys have been through actually blowing them off the hinges and things like this, so this is a little safer. Then number five is for the equipment for three deputies, just like I figured in that ARPA money to get rifle, the vest, the outer vest, the plate vest, helmets, duty radio, or duty belts and the radio. Radios are $7,500 bucks apiece. And number six on the next page, more sets of night vision. Seems like there's a lot of stuff goes on at nights and that gets hard to find people out there in the dark. So we've got some old night vision that I rent by the year, leased by the year, from the Navy, and that's old outdated equipment, but it still works. But I need to... Would like to get more. So those are pretty expensive at $14,445. We got some of those out of the ARPA money, but I'd like to get some more. So that'll basically, as of today, would leave me with $191,779.27. But since we have to put it off for another couple of weeks before we can... You can approve to let me spend the money, then that'll put more money in that equipment side. Well, that... So it'd be more than $43,000 in red on the bottom. Then on the third page, that's the plan for the 2025. The money's supposed to come in in October, 1st of October. So 52 jailers will be $208,000 for a full year, plus their FICA Medicare retirement, three deputies. So everything included, so at the end of the year, or at the end of all that, it'll only leave me $6,138.73. That's why I couldn't spend any more than that. On the bottom of all this is... The next one is the sheet that the auditor came up, helped me come up with all the FICA and retirement and all of that. So that shows a chart there, and then the bottom is the quotes for the equipment that we're getting. Like the first one, GT, they're on a state contract anyway, but that's the equipment quotes that I'd like to get, so.
Melissa, could we not make it retroactive, back to 326? Next court? Okay. Okay.
We've got it posted for a deputy right now. So as far as the deputy part, then it won't really matter because we haven't hired anybody anyway. We're working on that. But the money for the jailers, yeah, they sure need it as soon as we possibly get it to them. So that's the biggest thing in question, but...
Today, there's... So there's no action to be taken today because this was just an update. So we won't be approving anything.
Correct. But you'll approve the grant next court.
Okay. Oh, I see. I see what you mean. Okay.
Okay.
Is there any questions about the equipment that I'm requesting? It's needs that I have, and we've never been able to, other than the ARPA money and now this, we've never been able to get to a higher standard of equipment, so. And safety equipment is definitely a big part of this stuff with the helmets, the plate carriers, the vests, everything like that to keep my guys safe. Through the ARPA money, we got, which is a different deal, we got the 13 of the cars done now with the glass in the windshield, the side panel, side glass. So they're actively using them right now. So I'm all for keeping my guys safe. The reason we hadn't got all of them is because we're waiting for the new cars, when they might come in and put that glass in them right away.
I'd like to suggest that the district attorney needs to, you know, present, you know, this same kind of informative, you know, documentation of what he plans to do with the 275, you know, also.
He might be in court. I thought he was going to be here today, but he may have court.
Maybe, I don't know.
He has given us some ideas about victim coordinator, but he... I'd like for him, yeah, maybe he can come next time.
Maybe. And I believe that he's also been working with the auditor's office as well, making sure that everything's in compliance.
Okay.
Any other questions?
It's a blessing. Good job, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Tell Emily she did a good job. Tell her to keep it up. We'll need another $750,000 next month. Okay. All right. The next item. Discuss to take appropriate action in an intercost sharing interlocal agreement at the city of Granbury under Texas Government Code 791 regarding a professional services contract with Teague, Knoll, and Perkins, TNP, related to plans, specification, and estimates for improvements to Old Granbury Road, US 377 to Industrial Avenue in Granbury, Texas. We have just been handed something from the city manager, Mr. Chris Kaufman here. Colored map. Yes, sir. Let's hear from you, Mr. Kaufman.
We've been working on this quite a while. Apparently Exhibit C didn't show up, so I brought it hand-to-hand.
Thank you.
Basically Exhibit C is just a map of what's articulated in the scope of work on Attachment A, so here to answer any questions. I know this has been working with Commissioner Eagle on this.
So if I could indulge and kind of do a little background on this, we've been... We've been working on this now for a few weeks, and one of the things that was, of course, one of my frustrations is having to deal with government red tape. It's very frustrating. And we've got an estimate here that we... That was originally presented for a planning study. And I kind of work from the standpoint, look, let's just start working on it. Let's get... We got to start with intersections and let's just start doing something. And it does... Unfortunately, apparently, it just doesn't work that way with government. And... But this is an interlocal agreement. The city's going to be... The proposed agreement is where the city will administer the work to be done on the specifications and planning. And it's a... We're talking about a four and a half, roughly four and a half mile portion of Old Granbury Road, of which part of it is in the county, part of it is in the city, part of it is in both. And, well, I guess it's all in both, but as far as who's responsible for maintenance of the roads. And so what we've added in here is to include in this project, I guess, a foreshadow or this will come later to talk about plans, specs, and estimates, because that's what I want. I want plans, specs, and estimates so we can start doing the work out there. But apparently, we're going to have to do the planning study to start with. So we've got a... We've tweaked this a little bit. We've got an interlocal agreement that's specific to the planning study, and Mr. Kaufman and I have been working on that. The one that's in the packet is we... It's not the exact one we're going to do because item number 10 is different. That's... That was provided in the packet. But this will be... This initial project will be for a planning study and evaluate alternatives, et cetera, for the four and a half miles with TNP being the contractor. And then the agreement between the city and the county will be that the county will... It'll be $241,700. This is the punchline. $241,754 is the total fee, of which the county is responsible for 60%, the city 40%. The county's portion of this is $145,053. I had a long conversation this morning with the... His name just left me, from TNP.
Ryan.
From Ryan, Ryan from TNP. And he laid it out for me again, because I... Sometimes you have to tell me two or three times. And so this will get us up to where we can... Hopefully, we can get this done in the next five to six months and lead us up to where we can start working on plans, specs, and estimates to actually start doing the work. Probably looking at a 50... The total project at the end of the day is probably going to be about a 50 to 60 million-dollar project to do Old Granbury Road. So just letting you know that right now. Now, how long will that take? Well, look at the Crescent Bypass. The first dirt was turned on that in May of 2019, and they're still not done with it. So the thing we're going to have to figure out is how it's going to be financed, how it's going to be paid for, et cetera. I think we can pay as we go along, actually. But for purposes of today, it's just to go ahead and enter into this interlocal agreement with the city to move forward with the planning and specs, or the planning. And I guess one question I've got for you, Ms. Matlock, is where... We can pay this out in monthly installments. You know, there's different ways we can pay our portion of this $145,000. Do you have any suggestions where this money would come out of, at least to start?
We do have available funds in Fund 55, if you choose to go that direction.
Magic 55. It's always money in 55. So we do have funds available, and we don't have to come up with it right this minute, but we will... We will need to authorize this amount. So again, the interlocal agreement is between the city and the county, and then the engineers, the people that'll actually be doing the planning is TNP is via a contract with the city to get us to specifications. So is that pretty close, Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, sir. I would like to add that this is not a new item for any of us. We've been working on this since our last intergovernmental meeting, and so this is hopefully the final approach to landing this bird and getting this project going, so.
I agree.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
What changed in paragraph 10?
Paragraph 10 is, well, of course, my computer just bugged out on me.
I can... I don't know what you've got written, but up on the screen, what Commissioner Eagle was wanting to do away with was this agreement shall automatically renew annually during this period. We expect this project to be less than 12 months. He proposes to say this agreement expires in 12 months and subject to renew by voting, or I don't know what words you put in there, but that was...
Actually, I didn't change it.
Oh, you didn't?
I mean, other than take out that last sentence.
Okay. All right.
No, it was when we get the... When we get through with the planning study, we're done.
Right. And then we can do another one for the PSNE.
Right.
And all that. So again, I hope we can do the next one easier than this one, but I understand how challenging it is to operate in the bubble y'all have to be required to operate in per local government code, so.
Are you requesting that that last sentence, this agreement shall automatically renew, be redlined, or...
It's... I already got the new...
Okay.
It's been deleted.
Okay.
The one for the judge to sign, it's been deleted.
Okay. And has the date been changed?
Where is that?
March.
Here, I'll give you a copy.
Ms. Lang's got it.
And is the month updated to March?
Well, I marked through it and wrote it.
Mine's updated in March.
Okay.
So from reading through this and from my understanding, the next phase, the plans, specifications, and estimates, all we're saying is kind of doing like a letter of intent, that we, once the planning phase is done, we, both parties agree to, that we will enter into another agreement to go on with the second phase, which is the specifications and estimates. That's the way I read it. It's not included in here, but we're saying that we both anticipate that we will do that in the future.
Let me give you a point of comparison with this. You know, I think part of my heartburn was just, you know, six-digit money to do, to go out here and do planning and to come up with specs. But let's just hypothetically state that, say that we got $228,000 we're going to spend on the planning and another... And I don't have any clue where this would land, but say another $228,000 to get specs, specifications, et cetera, to actually start being able to build. Those are considered soft costs, so to speak. And if, for a $50 million project, that's still... That's about a percent. And if you want to compare like the one of these bond proposals where they're proposing 20... This district's proposing 20% in unidentified soft costs, this is pretty... This is getting it down there pretty well for the total project. So it took me a while. I had to struggle with it, but I'm there now. I understand it, and the government... Doing government projects is what it is. And it's frustrating for a guy from the private sector, but we've got to do our due diligence. And so that's where it's at. Any other questions, comments?
Just make a suggestion when you make your motion to say planning study instead of plans, specification, and estimates.
Thank you. That's... I agree with that.
This one has crossed out. Do you have a clean one that doesn't have February crossed out? Let me give you back here, and you're going to have to sign it again here. All right. Do I hear a motion?
Yes. So I'll move that we enter into a cost-sharing interlocal agreement with the city of Granbury as provided under the Texas Government Code 791 regarding a professional services contract with Teague, Knoll, and Perkins, Inc., IETNP, related to specifications for improvements to Old Granbury Road from US 377 to Industrial Avenue in Granbury, Texas, in the amount of $145,052.83 out of Fund 55 for the county's portion.
Second that.
Okay. A motion has been made by Commissioner Eagle to approve the interlocal agreement with the city of Granbury under Texas Government Code 791 for professional services with TNP related to plans, specification, and estimates for the improvement to Old Granbury Road in the amount of $145,052.83 out of Fund 55. Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in...
Well, you said plans, specification, and estimates. It's supposed to be the planning study is what we're approving.
Isn't that... Wasn't that my motion?
No, you said specifications.
Okay. So amended. Why didn't you catch me before? Why didn't you tell me before?
Sorry.
With that amendment pursuant to this contract that I got in my hands to sign. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Here it is, and go. Guard it with your wife. Can we have a special bodyguard for the sheriff up here? Okay. Good deal. Okay. No, sir. No. The judge and I are together frequently with the Texas 21 group. In fact, we were together last week with the Texas 21 group. And let's let me tell you, the work that gets done there is only going to be better because of the work that you four and Mr. Kaufman and his staff have done on this agreement. Thank you. I thank each and every one of you. Let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, okay, so, all right, this brings us to item number eleven. Discuss and take appropriate action concerning options available to Hood County in addressing the grinder situation. We got two speakers that want to speak on that. First is David Ferris. I don't, do y'all know David Ferris?
Hi, my name is David Ferris. All right. Yeah, I kind of wanted to speak on this one, because I know there was a lot of.
Don't tell me you invented the grinder, too.
Oh, no.
Okay.
But I was going to say that I have quite a few times used the facilities there for grinding. I had a four-foot tall trunk that was two feet in diameter at the bottom, and managing to get it into the trunk. So I used the grinder. I just wanted to say, though, that that facility, while very useful and important, I don't think is important enough to spend a half a million dollars on a replacement if there is simply a delay. I mean, there's land around there, you can stack stuff, city, you know, I don't have to be able to dump stuff there. I got two logs right now on the edge of my property, half in the lake, that I haven't been able to pull out because there's nowhere to take them, which I'm fine with. But I believe that you found that the replacement part is going to be coming soon, and have no problem waiting on that, okay? Save me money instead, all right? I'll leave those logs in the lake. And that's really all I was going to say on it.
Thank you. Dr. Harold Granik.
Hello. Well, I have a lot of logs, but I don't use the grinder, but it looks like a good investment. If you buy this grinder, then even when the parts come in for the, our old one, then you can use both grinders, and they'll last twice as long. So you haven't wasted any money. It's sort of like the backup batteries on your electronics. You don't always have to need them, but then we won't get into the situation that if the old grinder, even with the replacement parts, when it goes out, that we're stuck with not being able to do anything. This is a good investment that allows us to continue to do what we need to do, and in general, the price of a new grinder will not be going down in the future, so we're going to be saving money in the long term. I think we should do it. Thanks.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Wilson.
First off, Mr. Lenny, can you give us an update as far as, you know, the status of the replacement part that was located and the individual that was able to basically pull a rabbit out of a hat type thing on that one?
No, there's no update since the last one I gave you. I did find out Commissioner Wilson had asked to check on the demo model and the new one, see if it was still available. And in doing so, the gentleman that I've been working with was actually the one that got the part expedited. He had called around and, and, and got it done. So at this moment, we're still looking at that same date until, until then.
The part will be here expedited to when, April?
First week of April.
Do you know, the part will be available, and when do you anticipate being able to open the yard back up?
Depending on when they, they do get it fixed, we'll need at least probably ten days to get the area cleaned, cleared off, get it grounded, so we can start accepting. So possibly the third week of April, if everything comes in like, like they're telling us.
Okay. Now, how many days a week is the yard open when, when the grinder's working? How many, how many, is people out there work, you know, using the grinder, or how many days?
Monday, Tuesday, we don't do it Wednesday, and Thursday, so three days that.
Okay. Now, one of the, you know, during the time the, the system was up, you know, we've generated a substantial amount of money, monies because of the fees. One of the things that concerns me is, do we have out-of-county people bringing their brush there?
Talking with the guys, I think there's probably a handful, maybe three or four. The, the biggest part is the contractors that are based here, doing work out of the county, and then bringing it back, is based on what it is.
Would it be prudent for us, for, to start, you know, looking at the, the fee structure of, you know, those people that are not county residents, especially, you know, as far as, you know, putting, you know, additional fees, if they're bringing, somebody coming in from Johnson or E. Rath or Somerville to use ours, because our rates are cheaper than theirs, if they're not county residents, I would think they need to be, you know, paying a higher fee for that privilege.
If the court likes so, we'll, we'll start checking driver's license. I guess that's the way you do it.
Because, you know, the, from when the, the system was put back in operation to, till it broke again, the income for that period, which was October the fourth through March of 2023 through March of 2024, or March sixth of 2024, the income, you know, revenue generated was thirty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars, you know, for, you know, for the, you know, the fees that were paid. And, you know, the fee structure for the, you know, county residents, you know, not an issue, but I think the, if you're a non-county resident, there should be additional fees, you know, required, you know, for utilize our service. The other thing I would suggest is we look at the possibility, especially as we're coming into the peak period of utilization of the grinder, when it's working, would be to, you know, look at possibly, you know, having some Saturday hours, at least maybe once, twice a month, not every week, and, you know, some of the employees, you know, working rather than during those three days during the week, to put, you know, an issue, you know, that way, because of benefits to the people being able to bring stuff out. That's something we'd have to, you know, look at and, you know, see how we can do that and arrange, you know, those kind of, schedule of that arena. But I think, you know, the other thing I would suggest is, you know, the system, you know, the current grinder is eleven years old. The life expectancy on grinders are ten years. And we've just got through spending, you know, a sizable amount of money on this particular grinder from August of twenty-three, or, you know, maintenance cost so far is a hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars. So I would think that, you know, we still, at least come budget time, we start looking at the evaluation, you know, possibility of go ahead and purchasing a second one, and then have one of them, you know, have this one for a backup. Because, you know, we've seen, you know, this one's gone down considerable, considerable amount of time. So I would, you know, at some point, I think we need to start looking at that avenue also.
You know, that's, your point here is something that I never thought of. Is there a possibility of having two of those grinders out there at that location? Would it speed things along? Would it make it more efficient? Would you, would it require more people? Is that a possibility? That's something that I think, you know, maybe, maybe that deserves a little closer look. I've never thought much about it, but that's, you know, I mean, if one of them goes down, you've still got the other one going. You know, it's probably not a terrible idea to look, look at that. I don't know as though I would, you know, I'm ready to jump on, jump on board with that idea at this moment. You know, it's something else that, that I've been kind of a little bit back and forth with. I know there's a lot of landowners around here that never use that thing. They're going to push that stuff up in a brush pile and burn it off on their property out there. So I think that it's, it's proper and appropriate to have mainly more of the folks that are using it to carry that, that burden. I understand that there's some there with county cleanup and the right-of-ways and stuff like that, that we, you know, that we can all share that cost, but I would like to, and that's something that we've talked about a little bit, is it, is there, would it be prudent to set up an account that more of the cost of that, specific to the cost of that, come out of that one account, so that it can basically fund itself? And those are some questions that I'd kind of like to delve into there and look at a little bit, so. There's, you know, but I think that, that's a whole new avenue of thought that I've never even considered, so, dig on that a little bit.
I know Margaret has been looking at grants, fire protection and environmental grants, which we may be able to get to help fund a grinder in the next budget year, a bigger one. There is, we talked about this last budget season, about increasing the, the rates for what people, the charges that people, and we talked many different scenarios, having a commercial charge. How do you identify if it's commercial, just based on the sign on their truck, or how do you?
That, and, and they know who the contractors are. And, and the size of the load. They, they bring in quite, quite large loads.
As we talked about weighing, and you can't, we can't really do that, because scales are, I, I went through that at the railroad, that scales are always off. If you charge somebody for an overload, they're going to come back at you and say your scales aren't calibrated. So I don't think that's, I don't think weight will get into having to buy a scale and have it calibrated and getting charged for that, which will probably outweigh the, the amount of money we're charging for the commercial load, or, so if we can come up with a way to identify commercial loads and have a surcharge for out-of-county and, and commercial loads, and then, I agree with Commissioner Andrews, have it, those funds go into another account so that it becomes self-funding. If the grinder needs maintenance, or it goes down, those funds will be there to, to do that, so.
That would be great.
I think those are some good ideas.
I'd like to just hear from you. You've been working and doing this longer than anybody. You have more expertise about what goes on out there than anybody else in about equipment. What do you suggest that we do? What's, what is the best decision, in your opinion, for Hood County and its residents? Tell me that. That's just all I want.
I, I believe that the court should consider for the next budget, at least evaluating about a new one. It has gotten to its, end of its term, in a, in a manner of speaking. I think it was a good idea to keep the old one. It's not a good idea to go, just set it off to the same little set. We would utilize it to make the, the smaller mulch. So it'd be running about every two weeks, something to that effect, just keep it, keep it going, keep it running. It's going to be hard to, to check residents, and I say that is that we have a problem now that we're trying to keep them off the highway, from just lining up on the highway. So brush yard don't open until eight, we get there at seven-thirty, and we start then, just to keep them from, they still back up on the highway. It's just that we don't have that room between the highway and when they, they come in, even for a scale house. We'd have to figure some kind of route for them to get out on the property and come back and to, to hit that scale. But now, I would think the court really should evaluate, looking at next budget, about, you know, about purchasing one. We have talked, well, I've actually looked, Somerville's going through the same thing. They, theirs, theirs is down quite a while, too. And I did see on one of their minutes that they have approved to purchase a new one in October. Theirs is a little bit different than what ours. I don't think they have mulch, it's called a tub grinder, which is, in my, in my view is not very safe. It slings that stuff everywhere, so. But, but yeah, I would, I would, I would think the court would want to evaluate it for, for future, and hopefully, once this part gets done, it, it carries through, but, and I know I've said it before, but we haven't, we haven't done any repair to the, to the motor of this grinder yet, so. It's been a good motor, good engine.
Well, and I think you probably have some kudos to a, a particular individual that babies that thing a great deal, too.
Yeah, you do. It's, it's amazing.
So I wanted to make sure to point out that there's somebody that's really, really looking out for the taxpayer out there on that machine.
Just the littlest thing, go through there and just knock it out. It don't take much.
So the grinder, or the brush yard is open to the public on?
Wednesdays from eight to noon.
Wednesdays from eight to noon. So I think, Commissioner Wilson, were you asking for some more additional time for the brush yard to be open to the public? Is that what you were?
I'm not sure if it's more additional hours, but possibly, you know, Saturday, you know, couple, one or two Saturdays, you know, a month to, you know, people to go there that can't go during the week, you know, just to, you know, to do that. You know, if somebody, you know, come one of your employees that works out there to split the, the time, maybe they don't run the grinder on Saturday, they just do acceptance of the material coming in. But that would be, you know, that's something we need to, you know, look at, not saying we're going to make a decision on that today, but that's something that I think would be advantageous to the citizens of the county.
And this has come up quite a bit since the brush yard first started, is the Saturdays, and it's just budget constraints, and it's hard to, you got somebody, we got people work Monday through Thursday and Tuesday through Friday, ten hours, and to have them not come in on Monday and work a third Saturday, or, but at, if, if the court would like, I do have money to support for, say, March, April, May, and June, in this case, April, May, and June.
Just do it for a short period of time, not all year long?
I would. I would do it during this peak hour, peak days and months.
What, what line account is that money that was generated from October fourth to March sixth, that thirty-two thousand, five forty-four, what account does that go into?
Into a revenue account.
Is that a standalone, or is that?
It's within his budget.
So we do call out that, that revenue on its own line.
That would be, you know, something that could possibly utilize, you know, for future repairs and our purchase, you know, down the road as it grows, once it gets operational again, and that, you know, that's going to increase.
Right.
Well, but that, right now, that goes into making your budget. That is a revenue source for your budget, so it's kind of.
Yeah, it's not part of my budget, and it doesn't increase my budget, but it's in the bank. It goes to the bank.
Well, I mean, it's not set aside specifically for this. I mean, you may buy road materials with that, the money that comes in off of that, correct?
I, yes, if we run low enough.
I thought that that was, yeah, I thought that was just kind of into your general fund, and, 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 you know, if sixty thousand dollars is anticipated revenue in that, then that goes into make your budget every year, so. I, I think I would like to kind of see that carved out and separated a little bit for this purpose, so that, you know, if that's a separate fund, and it's got, you know.
He's got maintenance within that, too, so it's, the idea is that it will level itself out, but if he's having a hundred and fifty thousand dollar maintenance hit, his budget can't withstand that.
Right.
And it would take a lot of years for that thirty-two thousand to equate even to that one big expense, not to mention, you know, half a million, it would take more than ten years to just get any close, so.
The hundred and fifty-three thousand that we've already spent on this device, well, if I'm not mistaken, that come out of Fund Fifty-Five. That's where we've been pulling up that money, that's hundred and fifty-three thousand, that come out of Fund Fifty-Five, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't know, I wasn't here during that period of time, I'd have to research where, how we paid for that. I don't know it off the cuff.
Well, I think that the seventy, seventy-five or whatever that we did, but some of that's just small, oil changes and lubrications and sharpenings.
Yeah, that's out of our budget. No, it's not.
Okay.
It's over the past ten years, yeah, that's what it's come to.
The big expense may have, we'd have to go back and look, but may have come out of Fund Fifty-Five, but the everyday ongoing maintenance is coming out of your budget. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
So is that possible for next year's budget to set up another account, that the revenue from the brush yard would go into a specific revenue account?
Yes, you can call it out if you'd like to, but typically, these services, just like the. like the recycling center, they don't typically fund themselves. It's a service that we provide to the county that costs us out of our general fund.
Okay.
So I don't know if it would be cost prohibitive, essentially. You'd have to more than triple the cost to get anywhere close. So it would not achieve the goal, which is to, to keep the logs or people dumping around the county or whatever.
So any time, any given time, you can look over in your books and see how much it brought in, but it's not something to, you're saying it's, it's, there's no way it's going to pay for itself based on what the?
Just kicking numbers around, it wouldn't seem like it could.
I get it.
Okay.
It would have to be something we did as a service to the community.
The main reason I put this on, back on the agenda was, you know, to discuss it in the, since, you know, there was, you know, movement in getting the repair part, the meetings we can get the, you know, the yard back open, you know, in a much earlier date than August. And we're coming into the busy season on top of everything else. So that was, you know, basically to see where we're at and what our options out in front of us are.
Well, and the budget cycle starts in a couple of months. So we'll be able, if that's something that the court wants to consider as an additional item, and to have two units out there, then we can do that in the budget cycle.
Right.
Any other discussion? No motions? I want to move on? Nothing's going to happen?
Thank you, Judge.
Okay. Let's go to item number 12. Discuss to take appropriate action to purchase nine ballistic vests for the sheriff's office, two ballistic vests for Constable Precinct 4, two ballistic vests for the District Attorney's Office. Payment out of Fund 55, not to exceed $11,772, Sheriff Deeds.
Judge Commissioners, this is a grant that we've been utilizing for more than 20 years, the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant. And so I bring that before court so you can vote on it. So we've got nine vests for the sheriff's office that are exceeded their, up to their five years is all they're warranted for. And then two vests for Precinct 4, two vests for the District Attorney's Office, so the investigators. So the total for those would be $11,772.28. And then, once we get those in and get those bills, Lieutenant Lysen submits those into the system, and then they reimburse 50%.
Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion?
As I move that we approve the purchase of nine ballistic vests for the sheriff's office, two ballistic vests for Constable Precinct 4 and 2, and ballistic vests for the District Attorney's Office. Payment out of Fund 55 with a not to exceed of $11,772.28.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to take appropriate action to purchase nine ballistic vests for the sheriff's office, two ballistic vests for the Constable Precinct 4, and two ballistic vests for Precinct, for the District Attorney's Office. Payment out of Fund 55, not to exceed $11,772.28. Second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Thank you. Great. Thank you, Sheriff. Item number 13. Discuss to take appropriate action to appoint Jeanne Stacks to be Hood County Representative to the Western Region Solid Waste Capacity Policy Advisory Group to replace Clint Head, who has served his two-year term. Mr. Head.
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners. Two years ago, I was put on this group, and at the time, they were searching for a home for a landfill. And that part of the job is done. It's not going to be in Hood County. They're pretty much set on Denton County. Well, now they're more based on policy, which would affect things like the citizen collection station. So I recommend that I be replaced by Jeanne, because it'll affect her at the collection station.
Okay. Ms. Stacks, are you willing to serve?
Sorry?
Are you willing to serve in this capacity? Okay. Will you represent us honorably at this organization? It has 14 words in its title. So if not, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we appoint Jeanne Stacks to the Hood County Representative to the Western Region Solid Waste Capacity Policy Advisory Group.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to appoint Jeanne Stacks as the Hood County Representative to the Western Region Solid Waste Capacity Policy Advisory Group, replacing Clint Head. Second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. You are unanimously appointed, Ms. Stacks. Represent us well. Item number 14. Consider to take appropriate action to allow the Hood County Sheriff's Office to purchase a narcotic identification device out of the opioid settlement funds. Margaret Campbell and Lieutenant Gary Roberts.
Hello. A little bit of background information here. So the Street Crimes Unit and Gary Roberts came to my office to talk with Emily and I a while back about looking for a grant to purchase drug identification and detection equipment. And after looking at it, it became apparent that the opioid settlement fund would be a totally appropriate place to pull money from, for this equipment. The intent of the opioid settlement fund is for opioid remediation and abatement, and that's exactly what this device would do. So we think probably it's most appropriate to do that, if you are okay with it. But I did bring Gary up here because he is much more informed and can explain to you all the workings of the device better than I can.
So how much is this cost of this device?
It is $29,900.
$29,000. But it's so safe to pick up fentanyl, isn't it? I mean, you can pick it up and handle it like Play-Doh, can't you?
I wouldn't do that. Wouldn't be advised as a contractor. Yeah. Yeah, we do have a fentanyl problem in Hood County. We're doing the best to mitigate that and manage it. You know, it's, to give you guys some examples of how, how much of a problem it is, we've had several fentanyl overdose deaths. It usually affects our young citizens. You know, early twenties is kind of the citizens that we've, we've had experienced overdose deaths with. You know, just two nights ago, they made a traffic stop and found 50 fentanyl pills sitting under a kid in a car seat and a, and a stolen gun. So the, the problem is here. Our guys are doing their very best to fix this. It's not going to go away. It is very dangerous to have this stuff on you or about your person, inhale it. But when you're searching a car, you don't know what you're going to come across. When you do identify, you know, it's a, this is a safer way to use a laser. It can go through a bag or a small median barrier to identify substances. It also does, with the, the, when we're purchasing, it also does detect explosive material, gunshot powder residue, stuff like that. So we can use it in some other crime scene related fields, not just for narcotics. But the main thing is to keep our guys safe. We're running into it every day, like, and we're, we're setting up deals with our Street Crimes Unit. We're buying 500 and 1,000 pills at a time. And we're also getting pure, pure fentanyl powder now. So the other day, we set up a deal to buy half an ounce of pure fentanyl powder. So to give you an idea of what that is, if you read the DEA schedule, they say a kilo of fentanyl will kill 500,000 people. So, you know, some pretty serious stuff that we're getting into. It just helps us a little be a little safer and keep the drugs off the streets best we can.
This is a handheld device that you can not have, you can detect it without having to touch it or handle it yourself, even with gloves on. You can detect it with just holding this device.
Yes, ma'am. So this device, it will shoot through a bag or, or small barriers. And, you know, the, the system we have in place now is that you do have to open the bag. You have to take a swab and put it in another kit and break some ampules and things like that. And the reason this is even important is because, you know, we didn't do this and we just took the, the evidence and cut them loose at night on a traffic stop or whatever and had to send it to the lab. Well, then it has to go to the lab. We have to wait for the results to get back. And the investigator's got to get a, a warrant sworn out and then go find a judge and get it signed. And then they got to go track the guy down and, and, you know, kick a door in or something to go get a, to go serve this guy and arrest him. And, you know, then we're just leaving bad guys on the street for a longer period of time. So it lets us build probable cause to arrest somebody that night and on scene, and whether it be in a house during search warrant or just off a traffic stop. So it is very important to test it right then and not just wait for a, a lab, because, you know, you can have probable cause to arrest somebody, and this, this gets us there. So.
Good.
Okay. Anything else? Do I hear a motion?
As I move that we authorize the Hood County Sheriff's Office to purchase a narcotics identification device out of the opioid settlement funds in the amount of $29,933.29.
Exactly. Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to allow the Hood County Sheriff's Office to purchase a narcotic identification device out of the opioid settlement funds in the amount of $29,933.29. Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Good luck saving lives.
Yeah.
Okay. Item number 15. Consider and take appropriate action to approve promoting an employee from Clerk 2, $37,600, to Office Manager 6, $45,000, effective Monday, March 25th, 2024. This promotion will fill a vacancy in the County Attorney's Office. Mr. Mills.
Yes. 15 and 16 are kind of related to each other. So obviously, the clerical supervisor that we had got promoted to District Clerk about a week ago. And so I wanted to promote some clerk from our office, who's been here about five years, to clerical supervisor. And I emailed all y'all and explained all this a week ago. And the agenda item was already written this way. And so what I was trying to do originally in promoting her was if we could change it to Office Manager 6, I was giving back about $500. If she's getting a raise of about $7,000 or so. Anyway, I was going to give back 500, just as a goodwill gesture to the court. But apparently, that messes up other classifications by changing it from being called Clerical Supervisor to Office Manager for an office that's our size. And so to keep it consistent with offices our size, we need to keep it as a Clerical Supervisor. That's what Melissa basically said. So unfortunately, I can't ask to give back the $500. So I'm going to ask that she be put in the Clerical Supervisor position at the same salary that Roberta got, or was getting before she got appointed as District Clerk. Make sense?
Yeah. And I, we had a pretty good discussion over that. This is, that, the job duties that, that are assigned to that particular position line up with that Clerical Supervisor. And this is moving in at the step one, the entry pay for Clerical Supervisor. So I think that that makes, makes more sense to go ahead and leave that, leave that as it is and, and move her up into that Clerical Supervisor 1.
That's at 45.9? Is that what that is?
I thought it was 45.5.
Oh, okay. 45.5. Sorry.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve promoting an employee from Clerk 2 at 37.6 to Clerical Supervisor 1 at 45.5, effective Monday, March 25th of 2024.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to promote an employee from Clerk 2, 37.6, to Clerical Supervisor at 45.5, beginning Monday, March 25th, 2024. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Your next item, about hiring another employee?
Yes. So obviously, once we had a vacancy, we promoted a clerk to the Clerical Supervisor. Then there's a void there for that clerk position. And I was told that the, the three levels that are theoretically possible were the entry level at 34.5, I believe, and then there's another level at 36.6, and then there's the 37.6. So I sent y'all the, the person that we've agreed to hire and the resume and whatnot in an email. I told her that I would ask for the 37.6, which is the same salary, so not asking for any more money. But I said they may want to go at the 36.6, which is one notch lower. And she said that she could take the 36.6. So again, I'm, I'm asking for the 37.6, but I, I can live with 36.6. If you knock it down to 34.5, we're back to the drawing board a little bit, which I'll have to figure something out. Because she already put in a two weeks' notice at her employer to come here April 8th, I believe, is her start date. So that's what I'm asking for. But y'all can do either one of those. I'd be fine with, to hire her in.
Well, do I hear a motion?
Well, our policy says that we hire new hires, the policy that we approved last September, October, says that new hires come in at starting pay unless approved by court with special, specific skills that would merit an increase. So I don't know. I think that her, she's worked how long at the title company?
Almost two years at that title company. But again, she has an extensive history working dispatch.
Yes.
So she's not a, a new person on the job, so to speak, in working with these kinds of situations.
I'll make the motion to bring, wait, let me see, to hire employee in the County Attorney's Office. I think that our education and experience warrants going past the starting pay to step one, but I'm, I'm not seeing a step two. And just to be fair to other new hires that we've had in the past, so since this policy was, was put in place. So I would suggest that we, I'm making the motion for 36.6.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to hire and employ in the County Clerk's Office at the new hire of 36.6. Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Nay. So the motion carries 4-1.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 17. Convenient to executive session to discuss medical center and YMCA building, real estate leases pursuant to GC 551.072. Then reconvened to open meeting to take appropriate action regarding the leases and our professional appraisal on buildings. We have two speakers that have signed up to speak on this before we go into executive session. One is David Ferris. Okay. And the next is John Michael Korn.
Morning, Judge. Commissioners. My name is John Michael Korn, and I work for the YMCA of Metropolitan Fort Worth and for the Hood County YMCA. And about 13-plus years ago, roughly, we started having conversations with the school district about the need for an auditorium. And we also started having a conversation with commissioners of the court at that time about a community center with the possibility of being operated by the YMCA. Those conversations went on, and negotiations, for about two years until an agreement was met with all three parties. That agreement was signed in 2013 and was put to the, well, was put to the voters first, approved. The agreement was signed. The building was built and opened in 2015. In the nine years that the YMCA has operated, it has made roughly $20, $20 million and has expensed about 18 and 1/2, leaving about $1,500,000 in revenue that the YMCA has brought in. The YMCA has donated and put back into the county a million of that, and then has spent capital expenses, anything from air conditioners to the, the heater for the pool, about $650,000. So over the nine years of operation, about $150,000 roughly has been made at that, at that facility. It has been, I think, a great service to the community and the citizens of Hood County. It has been a partnership that has been great with the school district as well as the county. And I'm here today talking because this is the third time that it has been on the agenda for the court, and no one has talked to the why about why. I have reached out to some of the commissioners and to the judge and have gotten nothing other than we're just looking at whether we renew the lease or not. And I'm confused by this because the YMCA and the county and the school district entered into an agreement that was a 25-year agreement. And, and at the time, it was, this needs to be a marriage. This needs to be a marriage for the citizens of Hood County, so that when this bond passes and the building is paid for, that there isn't any other cost to the citizens. I will tell you that I have not stood in front of this court over the past nine years and asked for any so that when this bond passes and the building is paid for, that there isn't any other cost to the citizens. I will tell you that I have not stood in front of this court over the past nine years and asked for any money from you guys. The YMCA has covered all of those capital expenses and will continue to do that. There's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar Dectron unit, which is the pool humidification system, that covers the naditorium that is nine years old now. They have a life expectancy of ten to twelve years. That cost will be the YMCA's, not the citizens of Hood County, and not this court's. That is kind of the backdrop of why I'm here, but the biggest reason that I'm here is because this is a conversation that is happening, and as a partner in this agreement, I don't have any idea where the other partner stands, and that seems like not so much of a partnership. That's really the only reason I, I came to say. I know that you guys are going into closed session, and, and I will wait to see what, what, what comes out of that, but I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I guess what we could do is go to the consent agenda first and finish this up. So I'm going to delay going convening into executive session and do that last. So at this time, going to the consent agenda, does any commissioner wish to question or pull anything from the consent agenda?
I have something I just want to say, which is the good, two good news things. I want to first thank our treasurer, Leanne McCoy, for adding the yields to our reports now, on our treasures and investment reports. We have the yield, which shows that if you look at all the different funds that she has invested the taxpayers' money in, they're earning over five percent, some about five point four percent. So thank you for, for doing that and for putting that on our reports. Also, just to note that the county received a check for eighty-nine thousand, it's in three hundred and eighty-four dollars, in unanticipated funds from excess tax sales. This is unanticipated, and the court may, at a future date, determine if we should set up a special budget for those funds. The county has not received excess tax sales for almost ten years, and the additional four thousand dollars that I asked about yesterday was, I got a answer back today that that was to the district clerk for their expenses. So you should have received it, but it, it goes to the district clerk. So I'll forward you that email. I'll forward you the email when we get finished here. So thank you for all that work.
Anybody else down, you wish to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve the consent agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the consent agenda, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five zero. Okay. All right. Okay, we're down here to road ops, no road ops here. Development, Mr. Clint Head, discuss and consider the final plat of San Lorenzo lots one through six, precinct one. Yes, sir?
This final plat is being done to subdivide the six point zero zero three acres tract that is part of the Thomas Price Survey Abstract Number forty, four thirty-nine into six one-acre lots. That will be known as lots one through six, San Lorenzo. This final plat is in the Water Quality District in Precinct one and is served by Aqua Texas Water and Onsite Sewage Facilities. Aqua Texas has provided a letter stating they could provide the water to these new lots. Staff has reviewed this replat, or this final plat, and all comments have been addressed.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We approve the final plat of San Lorenzo lots one through six.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the final plat of San Lorenzo lots one through six, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five zero. Now, at this time, at five minutes till eleven a.m., we're convening into a public hearing to discuss and consider the replat of Blue Branch Ranch, Lot fifty-nine R. Yes, sir, Mr. Head.
This replat is being done to combine lots fifty-nine and sixty, creating a four-point four-six acre lot known as Lot fifty-nine R. The property is located in the Road Corridor District in Precinct one and is served by Well and Onsite Sewage Facilities. All comments have been addressed, and staff recommends approval as presented.
Okay. Any questions or comments concerning that? If not, at four minutes till eleven, we convene back into Commissioners Court, and do I hear a motion?
A move that we approve the replat of Blue Branch Ranch, Lot fifty-nine R.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the replat of Blue Branch Ranch, Lot fifty-nine R, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five zero. Now, at this time, at three minutes till eleven, we adjourn into a public hearing to discuss and consider the replat of the Landings Lot three twenty-nine, thirty-two ninety-two R, precinct two.
This replat is being done to combine lots thirty-nine ninety-two and thirty-nine ninety-three, creating a one point nine-one acres lot known as Lot thirty-two ninety-two R. The property is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct two and is served by A Mud Water and Onsite Sewage Facilities. Staff has reviewed this replat, and all comments have been addressed.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Jeanne, you frowned when he said onsite sewage. You're okay? Okay.
I was in a different world.
Okay.
Okay. If not, at two minutes till eleven, we're going to convene back into the Commissioners Court. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve the replat of the Landings Lot thirty-two ninety-two R.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to approve the replat of the Landings Lot thirty-two ninety-two R, second by
Second.
by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Head. Financial, Ms. Stephanie Matlock.
Hello. We have one million forty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents in invoices for this court. The Auditor's Office has reviewed all of the invoices and recommends payment.
Okay. Any questions or comments of Ms. Matlock? If not, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, a motion to pay the bills in the amount of one million forty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Motion been made by Commissioner Eagle to approve, to pay the bills in the amount of one million forty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five zero. Yes, ma'am?
Okey-dokey. The Auditor's Office has reviewed all the monthly reports and asks that the court accepts them.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments concerning the monthly reports? If not, do I hear a motion?
A move that we accept the financial reports as shown.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to accept the monthly reports as stated, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. That is it, folks, except that now the Commissioners Court is adjourning into executive session to discuss item seventeen concerning the medical center and YMCA building and real estate leases. We are reconvening back into Commissioners Court, and it is eighteen minutes till twelve, and I'm announcing that no action was taken in the executive session regarding the medical center and the YMCA building. So with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.